Sycamore City Council, right to left. Clay Harris, Fred Easter, Dustin Land, the attorney, Mary Wayne Woodruff, Alan Coker, Jennifer Yawn, and James Galt Brown. Meeting will begin momentarily.
I'm sitting here amongst the plague. At least both Yawns were.
Well, that way.
Have you seen the little Kel-Tec 5.7 pocket pistol?
Yes.
I think I'll get one of them just to give us.
Yeah.
You know, they're talking about keeping up with your grip. And I'm like, if you have extra magazines, you gotta keep up with those. I just wanna see these, how easy it is to.
You strip two ten rounds stripper clips in, you've got twenty rounds in some side of the pocket pistol. You can't solve your problem with that? You've got the wrong kind of problem.
That five seven, I'm saying they're on body armor, and that's a dangerous little round.
You've seen NATO ammunition on body armor?
Yeah. I've seen some, I've seen some myself, well.
I got five seven, I'll be here in two weeks.
Say that again?
I got five seven, I'm gonna be here in two weeks.
You all run about now?
I don't remember. I got a commercial loader in Queens County who's loading it for me.
It's not horrible, I mean, it's not egregiously. It's mentioned before. But it's a bit of a pain in the neck to reload.
Yeah, it is.
Now, that said,
You know, a long time since I've.
There actually is load data.
I did.
For fifty-five range.
Primered and. I've got.
I know, it's hard to find, it's gonna be slow, but it'll function.
I just.
I used to take the Smith thirty-eight K frame. Acquire that thing, polish it down, cut the springs down.
Yes, sir. I've got one done that way. It was a retired trooper. Had it and my dad loaded on.
You can just touch the trigger. I got a K frame.
If y'all would, if y'all would let me call the meeting. Order being, how about you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. Lord, we've come before you on this evening, and we just bow our heads and bow our hearts and take a knee, and we just thank you for everything you've seen fit to give us. Lord, we are especially thankful for the sacrifice of Jesus. And Lord, as we go forward, we ask you to watch over those in public safety. Keep them in the palm of your hand and keep them safe, Lord. They protect us, we ask you to protect them. And farmers, give them what they need to grow the crops. As this board meets tonight, I'm praying that you grant them the wisdom they need to make the right decision in your sight. So this will be a community you are proud of. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Now, we need to play.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three, discuss and vote to approve agenda.
Vote to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? So carry. Uh, I'm for discussing vote to approve minutes.
Vote to approve the minutes as stated.
Same here. All in favor?
Okay, uh, so carry. Item six, or item five, excuse me, discuss and vote on section. There will be none.
Okay.
Or it's a skip on item six. Discuss and vote on Jifa loan and water rates. And I do believe we have Mr. Bill Powell pressing for us.
And thank you for the pens.
So, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, let me just tell you all that. I'm the messenger now. Don't shoot the messenger.
Oh, I don't like the sound of this.
We ain't got no guns. Lot of like.
What's the "we" business?
I think Bethany got, she made y'all copies of this right here.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That's the, that's the, that's the numbers part of a business plan. I sent her the narrative that I just did an update business plan. Right here. That's on file. If you wanna get you a copy, take it home with you once, you know. If you're having trouble going to sleep, pick it up, read it, and it'll put you into sleep. All right? Now, I've got another one I sent to her. It's an ordinance, rate ordinance. It talks about tap-in fees. You know, reconnect fees, you know, and things like that. Okay, so there's your ordinance. We can talk about that at a different time. This is all stuff I want y'all to take home with you for homework, okay? And read and look at. All right, now. Uh, Stacy Abrams, Stacy Abrams, I can't believe I said that. I can't.
A Marine ain't gonna let you get by with that.
God bless me, I'll tell you what. Stacy Watkins called me. Said he's doing a project, some project for y'all, and then I talked to Sean Hampton this morning. I said, y'all will be there tonight, and they said, I don't know. So evidently, they're not, they're not here. But they've got, they have submitted to Jifa. Or will submit to Jifa. An application for, I don't know what they are, it's a water project and a wastewater project. A total of about a million dollars. For both four hundred thousand, so in water and six hundreds of thousand in sewer. Now. Stacy, he asked me, I work with a lot of engineers. And I do these studies for them, so. Anyway, let me just back up start over, kinda over here. I'll introduce myself. Bill Powell, I'm Georgia Rural Water Association. I've been working with them for about twenty-four years now. I used to be the director of water and wastewater for the city of Brunswick for about sixteen years. And don't hold it against me, I am an Auburn graduate, I graduated in engineering at the mall. Back in nineteen sixty-seven. And I'll just tell you, anyway, that I graduated in June of sixty-seven, I was in Vietnam by November of sixty-seven. So I spent three hundred and sixty-six days in Vietnam with the first infantry division. All right, now. So what I do, when Stacy and Coleman, these engineers call me, they need a rate analysis for the city. That may, that's gonna go to Jifa, and that shows them that you're able to pay the loan, operate and maintain your existing system, and operate and maintain the upgrades that y'all were applying for, you borrowed money on. Just like when you borrow money on your home. You gotta show that you're gonna maintain that house to guarantee your loan. So what we're doing here is guaranteeing the loan. And so it's real simple. Whatever your budget is, whatever your expenses are, we've gotta generate revenue to meet those expenses. And what has happened, when I set these for y'all back in two thousand and twelve, it's a long time ago. We all know prices have gone up. Costs have gone up. And if you don't increase your rates a little bit along, you run into a situation like we're right here, right now. You've gotta have a major, major, major increase. Now, y'all did implement my rate structure last time, where you have a state prison here. Before, you were just treating that prison just like an individual home. But for the last, from twelve on, you were not doing that. You were treating them like they should be treated. They have the same impact as two hundred individual homes. Now, you didn't implement that on the nursing home here. You're treating that nursing home just like one household. That was never, never implemented, that one on the nursing home. So we've got to implement that. And we've got to set up what we call an equivalent residential connection. Or an equivalent residential unit. I just completed all that up in Ashburn, and I talked to Sandy up there about a real simple way of calculating it. And I did that here. I took the consumption from the prison. I took the highest month, they had, you take the highest month out of twelve months. This calculation, the incident calculation, kept that to your RUs. Lo and behold, it came out to two hundred. So two hundred is what, the number of inmates, we use, the number of inmates. And people don't realize that one inmate could put into a single family home. They use that much water. They use inmate, one inmate, we use about a hundred and twenty gallons a day. Now, that's cooking their food, washing the clothes, and doing all that. But that usage at a prison is about a hundred and twenty gallons a day per inmate.
I find that astounding.
That's a state prison. You know what a federal prison is?
Two hundred and forty.
Close, about two hundred, between two hundred and two hundred and forty gallons.
Private inmate per day?
Gallons per day, per inmate.
I don't have any for a run prison.
That's private prison. And when a private prison, about seventy to eighty gallons a day. Talk about that. Okay, now. All right, after all that's been said, let's do the study for the city of Sycamore. The girls, Brittany, Bethany, has sent me all the information. Sean gave me good information. And look at worksheet A. That's the water, you've got water and sewer. Two pages there. You see expenses for water, a hundred and fifteen thousand. Reserve, twenty thousand dollars, that's all, that's all we're looking at. But twenty thousand dollars is very small. Oh, Sean'll tell you that right now, if he has a problem, broken fire hydrant or something like that, twenty thousand dollars not gonna go very far. But let's at least get that much. So you've got a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in operating expenses, twenty thousand dollars in reserve. So your operating expenses, and which reserve is a hundred and thirty-five thousand for water. Next page is wastewater or sewer. You've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you've got another twenty thousand in reserve. So you're looking at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for operating budget for the city.
And these, these projections, looking about seven to eight thousand dollars per year increase per year through twenty twenty-nine?
That's just estimates, that's just about ten percent increase.
Is that, is that a low-bol estimate or top-end estimate?
Low. Now, what's happened, Sean'll tell you this, you buy chemicals. They've gone up the last four, five years, gone up more than fifty percent, close to a hundred percent. Most of a lot of your chemical stuff, like that fluoride, chlorine, nobody, yeah, we're just asking off. All right. Worksheet B, let's go to the next page over there. This is what I got from Sean Hampton. I sprayed it out over two years. Two, I put two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty in one year, two hundred and sixteen thousand, three fifty in the other year. Loans, you get the loans, a two hundred and sixteen thousand, the total. Your water project loan, new loan, is twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars a year. All right, this is an amortization schedule of your water loan, that is the first page of it, you'll see where the twenty. I mean, I think, I hadn't, I didn't send it, I can send it, you can make it up if you want, whatever. Wait, this one, right here, this is your wastewater too. That's, this is page one of that loan. And you've got an existing loan on your water of nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-three. So right now, your total debt service for water is forty-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars a year. The next page over there is capital budget for, of course, in worksheet B, this is from the wastewater. Three hundred and twenty, then one year, three twenty the next year. You're gonna borrow six hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars a year in payments, interest and, interest and principal.
You say currently, we were paid forty-something thousand a year.
Currently, currently, you've got about twenty, right after you paid about almost, almost forty thousand dollars a year in current debt. Sir?
No.
That's what your budget says.
On this finger thing, we are paying around around nineteen thousand dollars a year.
I've got nineteen thousand, two eighty-three in water. And I got sixteen thousand, eight ninety-one in sewer. That's what your budget's showing.
There was a loan and principal that is paid out in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, okay, but this, so it's still on here, I mean, still on, it's on, still on right now.
It may be still on, it's definitely, it will be paid out next year.
Okay, but we've still got twenty-five. Still got another year. Then what we wanna do is, we want to look at it, look at the rates again next year. I mean, we, we don't wanna go thirteen years between, we said, you're looking at, you know, the rates again, okay? We wanna look at these rates every year. And Jay told me that I had to, I had to work twelve more years before I could retire.
Yeah.
I says.
Good Lord.
I says, I said, Jay, I'll be ninety-three years old. I says, what does twelve years have to do with it? He says, that's when I think about retiring. So anyway.
Here's a question for you.
Sir?
If you get to retiring, how old are you being in twelve years?
Ninety-three.
What's the matter about your retiring?
I don't need to retire, I don't wanna retire.
Yeah, I have to throw it up for fun.
Okay, let me, let me get a brass tax number. How much do we need to increase our rates?
We getting there.
Okay, am I gonna get another week?
Maybe.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That is worksheet A. The skip over worksheet C, that's just breaking down that twenty thousand dollars in reserve. And that's part of, this part is part of the business plan, and APD wants to look at that. All right, let's get to worksheet D, the very first page, worksheet D. I'm gonna drop that again three more times, and I'm gonna. All right. It's worksheet D right here. It starts off with, right now, you've got three hundred, one thirty-five in water, one seventy-five in sewer, total three-ten. You've got forty-eight thousand dollars in water and debt for water, fifty-nine thousand dollars debt for sewer. Your total operating budget, including debts, four hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Which is eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars a month.
Eighty-five.
And I just divided that by twelve.
Oh, I was.
The hundred and seven thousand.
Oh, I was looking at four hundred and seventeen thousand, no, no.
Eight thousand, nine sixty-four, fifty.
In other words, water's gonna be fifteen thousand, two thirty-four, and sewer's nineteen thousand, five seventeen. To generate that. Okay, now, so what we gotta do, you've got customers in the water and sewer's gotta pay for that, right? All right, how we do that? How do we calculate that? Let's go to the next page. You bill out about nine, about one million, nine hundred and sixty thousand gallons of water, and you bill out about one million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand gallons of sewer a month. You have three hundred and nine water customers, two hundred and thirty sewer customers, two hundred and twenty additional equivalent customers. That's two hundred at prison and twenty at the nursing home. So you've got an equivalent number of customers of five twenty-nine in water and four fifty in sewer. So we divide those numbers back up into your build, water and build wastewater. We come up with thirty, three thousand, seven hundred and five gallons per residence, individual residence. In other words, the average home will be going to use about thirty-seven hundred gallons a month. And that's about normally what it is, I, my, all my calculations over the state, everywhere I live, it's about three, thirty-six and thirty-eight hundred gallons a month. So you're, so you're, so you're looking pretty good, but then I think the water project, I mean, y'all may be changing that, changing that to meters and.
We've got some lift stations on this station. The wastewater and changing meters out for under water.
Under water, okay.
And some equivalent.
So, so anyway, so we got, so we're gonna do, we gotta generate the rate, we gotta generate the numbers for that. So what we do, let's go to the next page, and this is how we do it. Y'all have already set, y'all have already put it in compliance, put in, you're in compliance with the Water Stewardship Act. Right now, back, we did this in two thousand and twelve, we got to an increase in block rate. And that's what Governor Sonny put in place. So we set a base charge of eleven dollars and forty-three cents for water, thirteen thirty-eight for sewer. The debt service is seven fifty-seven for water and eleven oh-two for sewer. So your base charge for water is twenty-one dollars, and the base charge for sewer is twenty-five dollars. That's for no, no usage whatsoever. So, that is forty-six dollars for the base, for the base charge. Currently, you're at twenty-one dollars. That's a twenty-five dollar a month increase. A hundred and nineteen percent. But take that twenty-five dollars a month, divide it over twelve years, as you could've done, gone a little bit up here. And you wouldn't be doing this, you wouldn't be in this bad situation. I had a lady over in a, a representative over in a Bianna. She called me up. She says, you went up ten percent, this was ten percent over there. She said, why'd you go up so much? So then, they were, they were lucky, they, they, it's been like ten, eight or ten years, and they've done it, and. She said, why'd you go up so much? I said, well, it's been ten years. She said, well, I understand ten years, but why'd you go up so much? I said, it's been ten years. I understand that, but why'd you go up so much?
You went up ten percent in ten years?
Yeah.
You went up one percent a year?
Yeah. So she said, well, why'd you go up so much? I said, wait, but let me do it, let me explain it another way here. All right, you go into a grocery store ten years ago. You pick up a gallon of milk. Then you go in there ten years later, pick up a gallon of milk, is it the same price? Oh, I think I see what you're talking about.
Or a dozen eggs.
Dozen eggs come down there. So, that's what I'm saying, we wanna look at your rates again next year. Okay, what y'all do is strictly, I mean, I'm just making these recommendations. But what I can say is, to get that money, you're gonna have to show Jifa that you can set the rates properly, you pay for it, everything. And so, we set it up for the first ga, from the first gallon up to twenty thou, two thousand gallons, it's two dollars and twenty-five cents a thousand. And y'all are already on this plan, I mean, this, this number's right here, we did this back to twelve. Two twenty-five, two seventy-five, three dollars, three twenty-five, three fifty, four dollars. Okay, wastewater now is not under that plan, so we've got a straight five off and twenty-five cents a thousand. You're lucky that I did one, I just got to figure one, my, their, their sewer is gonna be right at twenty dollars a thousand. And then, if you look at this very last page, it all boils down to that very last page.
Yeah.
That's what it boils down to. The nursing home, currently, they, they bill for like ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety gallons, they were billed five hundred and seventy-four, seventy-three dollars and ninety-four cents, they will go to one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's a two hundred and thirty-eight percent increase. Which is about right, because they were not being charged the ERUs like the prison was. The prison used four hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred gallons, their bill was six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents. It'll go to twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. Now, one thing about it, the state prisons, a lot of years ago, I went around and around with state prisons. The governor got involved, and I got fired, and everything like that, all of that. It all came around, and the prisons said, well, the man was crazy. But I kept waiting for a letter from the governor apologizing, but I never got one.
Funny that, how that happened.
That was, that was our, that's our friend Nathan Devo that would deal with it. The one thing about it, when Jimmy got in his office, he looked at him and said, when they got to talk about prisons, Jimmy looked at him and he says, my man won. So in other words, it took a while, a number of years to get, to get, to get back. The prisons, they, they, their engineers recognized my methodology was fair and accurate to everybody. And that's what we wanna do, I wanna make sure that Grandma is not subsidizing that nursing home or that prison. And that's what I said, so many places I wanna bring, there's one place over in Hurricanee. They got these big chicken houses, and one of the board chairmans is next to a neighbor, a neighbor owned a big chicken house. So I'd give him all pins like that in the yard. He says, Bill, you don't understand the politics over here. I said, well, let me see if I can explain it. I said, you got a neighbor that's got a big chicken house. And you're gonna do everything you can to try to keep these rates low. Is that the politics we're talking about? He didn't say anything, I said, I tell you what I want you to do, I want you to bring Grandma up here. I want you to stand there in front of this board. I want you to look her straight in the eye. And I want you to tell her, she's gotta pay more. So my neighbor, so your neighbor can pay less, which isn't that. Now, that's exactly what you're doing right now, but you need to tell Grandma that, right in front of the board up here. He looked at me, he said, you want your pin back? I said, no. But that was some of that, and that's what, I tried to do that. And Jennifer, don't, don't do, I didn't, I'm not gonna do you like I did this lady over when I was in Remington. I kept, she was up, this girl, Amy was over on the west side of wherever you were. And I kept, when I kept talking about Grandma, I kept looking at her. And I just, I just always looked to my left, and that's where she was. And by golly, she stopped the whole beach, she said, I wanna know something right now. I didn't know what was coming, she said, why do you always look at me when you talk about Grandma? I said, oh, Lord, please, you know. But I, it was just that I was just, I just looked in your direction, in her direction, and I was like. Sir? It's Grandpa, okay.
And great-grandfather.
Great-grandfather, yeah.
And then some.
And then some.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On this last page, you've got proposed rates, and it says for twenty twenty-three, and then proposed rates for twenty twenty-four, is that supposed to be twenty-five?
That's what happens when you get, get an Excel spreadsheet, and you don't change the numbers up there. That's twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, just double-checking.
Yes, my bad. This actually, the one right here is actually two thousand. This actually, the one right here is actually two thousand twelve. These right here, because all the rates haven't changed since two thousand twelve. And this should be current, I just didn't set proposal, it should say current rate. I don't know why they catch that. My apologies. That's the current rate, that's y'all have right in that current rate.
Where it says twenty-three and twenty-four?
It was.
Does that say current?
Current, they just say current, which is two thousand twelve, just say current and proposal. My, my apologies for that. When you, when I, when I move one spreadsheet from one to another, I know y'all do, I know y'all done that before too, if you're in it. Doing, doing, doing the letter, write it up, say George or something, it's like Dear Sam, something like that, and we. I've done that on my, on my Word documents a lot. But that's, that's the current rates and your proposed rates. Using those figures that you got in that last sheet. If you break it down, the prison would be using fifteen point seventy gallons an hour. Yeah, they, they use four hundred and forty thousand gallons in a month.
In a month, or a year?
A month. No, that's a month. Yeah, it's a lot.
Because they emptied that tank every month.
Oh, really? Yeah, that's a, that's a hundred, they, that's about a hundred and twenty gallons a day.
Four hundred and forty thousand gallons.
Divide that by, divide that by thirty.
Divide it by twenty-eight days, that's fifteen thousand gallons.
Six hundred and seventeen. Divide that by, uh, twenty-four.
Six hundred fifty-four point seven six one.
Six hundred and seventeen of gallons an hour.
I, I, that, that just, I that flabbergasted me. Where's it going?
Well, they figure it, you figure a hundred.
Back to our sewer.
About a figure, a hundred and twenty gallons a day times two hundred. That's twenty-four thousand gallons a day, the number of inmates. And then you go by that times thirty. That's seven hundred and twenty thousand gallons.
What, long term, my lord, that must, that's an enormous figure.
Yeah, they, your state prisons will use between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thou- a hundred, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty gallons a day per inmate. That's what they were using. That'll be six hundred and seventeen an hour, which is a lot more than two hundred a day. That's four hundred and forty thousand gallons in a month. If you break that down though, down to hour, you live at six hundred and seventeen dollars an hour. I meant six hundred and seventeen gallons an hour. Sixteen hundred and seventeen gallons an hour, yeah. They, they're using a hundred and twenty gallons per day for inmate.
And what are they using it on?
Washing clothes, cooking, washing floors down, take the showers. And, see, I've done the, I've done a lot of state prisons. I've done federal prisons, and I've done private prisons. I say, state prison will use a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty gallons a day. The federal prison will use close to two hundred gallons a day, and a private prison will use seventy to eighty gallons a day.
And when it comes to institutional use of water, there's clearly no economy of scale.
No, they, they just don't, they just, the private prisons control their showers and everything, so much more. Federal prisons don't really care, they, you know, they.
Because they're spending federal taxpayer money.
I know. There's one up there, the federal prison in Jessup is about, right at two hundred gallons a day. And I did a federal prison up in South Carolina, and that's in South Carolina, and they're about two hundred gallons a day.
Which prison's that, South Carolina?
Well, it is still South Carolina.
Okay, I'm with you.
Sean, what's the average usage per household here, you know, like, just?
Average is somewhere around four thousand. Thirty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-eight, four thousand.
Just where the majority of the households fall on this scale.
The majority of you, what you want to do is look at the four thousand gallon customer. Well, four thousand gallon is gonna go from like thirty-two, twenty to seventy-seven dollars.
I got a question, Counsel. When we hit them with this rate increase, what's the likelihood they're gonna close that prison because it can't afford running?
They won't.
I don't see how they could, but, I, I guess they could.
State prison ain't it.
I know rehabilitation. Ask them, okay, they gotta, they're looking at a twelve thousand dollar water bill.
Where they gonna move to?
To someplace else.
But that's not a, that's, that's, that's more like a halfway house, that's not a full-scale prison.
Yeah, that's not going anywhere. All right, ask them, what you need to do is find out what the power bill is. I guarantee you, it's probably ten times what the water bill is.
Well, they don't tend to turn the lights out in a prison.
All right, let them run out of, okay, let, let that prison run out of water?
I know, but.
That happened at the Spartan. That's where I worked at once before, in that state prison in Spartan. They have destroyed that damn thing, that place.
Look, I'm old enough to remember when we had drought down there in two thousand eight. And municipal wells, not thirty miles from here, were bringing up sand and seashells out of, out of the ground, because there wasn't any water. You, you think gasoline's expensive? What, you gotta ship in drinking water?
Because, because I'm gonna ask you, the one thing I always, when people talk about this, take, okay, you got a seventy-seven dollar water and sewer bill. The power, the customer of your household bill, I guarantee you, your, every one of your power bills is a lot more than seventy-seven dollars.
Sure do.
Oh, of course. All right. Let's take water, let's take electricity. Which is more important?
Yes. You can live without electricity.
You can live without electricity. Water and sewer is the cheapest utility you got. How many have these, these things we got on around, these cell phones, you know? There, there's one right there, cellphone. Justin, how much is your cellphone bill, about a hundred and something, a month?
About three times that, because I got, I need. I need all you give me.
So what's happening, you take a cellphone bill and say it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Your water bill's seventy-seven. Which is more important, the water or that cellphone?
You can live without cellphone.
You can live without cellphone.
That's a debate.
I agree with you.
That, that, that's your children talking, not you.
So looking at this, being as the increase that we have here, like, if you, we look at the four thousand gallon customer, and the increase is a hundred and thirty-nine percent. And that's because we haven't raised the rates in thirteen years, or twelve years. So that would have been an average of somewhere slightly over ten percent per year.
Something like that. Some years more, some years a little less, depending on, depending on your.
That we should have been increasing the water bills just over ten percent per year, every year.
Well, not necessarily, because right now, then you hit, you get hit with a million dollar loan right, right now. And before, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have, you would, you're not having that. And what we're doing, we're putting the loan into the rate right now, because if we wait, we have to put a line item in your budget as a, as a loan reserve. Now you're actually collecting a little bit on that loan ahead of time, so you're gonna put aside to use as reserve.
Sure.
So we just go collect the money.
So I'm looking at this from the standpoint of the people in Sycamore who's are gonna get slapped for the water bill that they're not prepared for.
I know.
And finding a way that we can ease the burden for that.
What do you suppose?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out the, the, and the amortization schedule for this loan is how long, how many years?
Twenty years. I only printed it per, per.
In the last ten years, we did not increase anything at all, and we should have. But instead of, it, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a way that we can, instead of hitting them all with it at one time, that we can increase it incrementally over the next ten years and help make up the windfall without coming with them, smack at it, and we're done.
Just out of curiosity, what are you gonna do about the next ten percent that's gonna go up in the next ten years after that?
As I'm saying, incrementally increase it, so like if we went up ten percent this year, then eleven percent, then twelve percent, and so it doesn't feel like, ooh, you know. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying it's not even looking at the math or I mean, I'd have to sit down with a spreadsheet and do it, but.
I'm, I'm not thinking about the math so much as I'm thinking about the politics of it. Uh, we need to have public meetings, and we need to explain this to the public. And the first thing we need to explain is, we haven't raised your rates in ten years, twelve years.
Twelve, from two thousand twelve.
And now, it's not a matter of having a choice in it.
Right.
Uh, I, I will remind everybody of the current situation with the tax digest. And the reason that wasn't raised.
Well, I know Jennifer had a, over in Midway, Georgia, they're talking about council member, and I, I suggested that they would implement the rates over a period of time, like over six months or a year. She says, why do I want to get my butt chewed out five times when I could just get it chewed out one time? Well, what happened, the impact right now is with, and, and you're gonna get phone calls, you're gonna get, they're gonna catch you, they're gonna, they're gonna eat, they're gonna put us. But that passes. If you go up, if you go up five dollars, or ten dollars, or twenty dollars, you're gonna get the same amount of complaints. And they're gonna complain every time the rates go up. Anytime rates go up, people gonna complain.
Sure.
Now, what I will do is I don't expect y'all to stand, sit up there and take questions from the, from the public about this. I'll come back at a public hearing for the meeting. You can do it prior to the increase. You can publish it, say, rate, when rates gonna go up, we're having a public hearing to discuss it. There may be, maybe be a few more here. But when the rates change, they'll be lined up out the door and everywhere else.
My concern really is not just that the rates change, it's what's gonna happen when they stop paying their water bill because they can't afford it.
They can't afford it. They will go and get their nails done before they pay their water bill. They'll pay that cellphone bill before they pay the water bill.
To be clear, we don't really have a choice in this matter.
If you're gonna get, if you're gonna get the loan, that's what's gonna happen. I mean, that, that's why I wanted Stacy to hear today, Sean.
Bill, one thing I gotta point out, Turner County is among the least affluent in the state of Georgia. And Turner County just went through a major nuclear attack on our property taxes because the, the tax digest was not updated for seventeen years. And when it was, everybody's taxes going to double or more twice this year. Not once, twice. And, and this on top of that, I'm sorry, but many of our residents are going to be unable to pay cell phones or water bill. It's not a case of
I, I, I don't know, but.
What we need to do is promote expenses, groceries, water bill, taxes, all slamming at one time. We have got to look out for our people.
I understand, I, 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 I understand that, but what's gonna happen is that the lending institutions are gonna wanna make sure that you can pay the loan back. And maintain, they're gonna loan you money to, to upgrade your lift stations, like I said, treatment plants, water meters, things like that. You're gonna have to be able to maintain those. And that's, that's, that's your maintenance costs. So what I'm, what I'm saying here, that's a tremendous increase.
I agree with that.
Yes, it is.
It is, it's tremendous increase. My question, you know, we should raise the money like this because me and him have done that with it. We had talked about getting rid of the long-term debt. So being ready, went to the bank personally and sat down and talked to them about the long-term debt we have. One account that's listed in our budget sheets as long as the present will be paid out in twenty twenty-six. The other, thirteen of them, it had a bond on it. Number one, this one, you talking about amortizations, it gonna have a bond on it.
It, it's a bond issue.
I told you, that one there, we couldn't touch. You can't pay it off early. It has to be paid on schedule. And when that's paid on schedule, they make their money. Well, what's gonna happen is right now, I figured it. And that one's gonna be like, what is it, twenty thirty-three, when it's repaid out? I gotta explain it. No, it's, that one, is it, worst-case scenario, twenty-year loan. At three percent. Now, I don't know, but you're probably gonna be looking at some loan forgiveness. I don't know what it is, Stacy, after you have to submit it, we have to submit worst-case scenario. Twenty years, three percent loan. Now, you're not gonna go to the bank and get a three percent loan. No. All right, now, but it might, Jifa may give y'all a one and a half. You ain't gonna never, you ain't gonna get that, the one, the one that's.
Another bank. We know that.
So they, you know, I, uh, I'm not, I'm not sure, but you need to ask Stacy, I wish I could have you here, about that, because I'm not sure whether Jifa will penalize you for early payment. The problem is, your race, you're not gonna be able to pay it off early. Because you're not, you're not, you're not gonna have the revenue to pay it, pay it off early. We couldn't, because it had to stay that way because of that bond.
Well, if you, uh.
I do not like that bond. Unless they're gonna.
It's a rev- it's a revenue bond.
Or unless, unless they're.
It's a revenue.
At least they're gonna. But I believe you can pay it off, I believe you can pay it off, I believe you can pay it off early, I'm not sure. But, because what I've done before, USDA would have a forty-year loan. What I did was I say, okay, instead of, let's calculate the rates on a, instead of forty years, let's do it on twenty years. So in other words, you're gonna pay that loan off in twenty years instead of forty. Because the interest has happened. But, and you're, and you're making payments ahead of, and you're ahead of the schedule. So if something comes along, you have a major problem, you can actually use some of that payments and not make any payments for a few months. These totals that you have here on the amortization on the scheduled payment. Okay? Right here. Yeah, okay, I'm with you. That there, oh, is that a monthly payment or a year? These are, these, on this one, this wastewater is three thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars a month. A month. Per month. Okay, that's what I needed. Right. And you see, it's six hundred and forty thousand dollars at three percent. That's through wastewater, and, and the water is four hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred, three percent for twenty years, and that's two thousand three hundred and ninety-eight sixty-three a month.
But these numbers here are based off of having the current expense of the loan plus the additional. So if those loans that are currently in existence are going to be paid out within the next, say, two years.
One of them will be.
Then these numbers are incorrect.
They will know what's. We, next year, we will actually look at your rates again.
Okay.
And then, and make, and, so we know whenever, probably, probably, you want you, your, your increase in operating budget would be, probably, will maybe, probably closer to that loan payment.
Right.
So in other words, we'll, next year's probably going to be these rate rates, so, okay?
Sure. I would hope.
But let's look at, let's look at the rates every year. I want y'all to look at them at, at least every two years, preferably every year. I want y'all to look at them at, at least every two years, preferably every year. Call me, I mean, I, like over here in Leesburg, I've been, they call me every year. And we do, and I do a study over there for them every year, and they, and they, and they get their rates increased every year. And I, and of course, now, I just did the work one in Ashburn, and they, they're implementing the rate structure in Ashburn now. Should've been implemented months ago, and I need to get back up there and check it out.
So, Mr. Fran, are we talking about this going into effect in the next budget, or are we talking about this going into effect in April?
Uh, it can go into effect in, uh, in April. Uh, I'm sorry, the budget's already pretty low, like, between now and July, but.
Right, so we're talking about something that's gonna happen for the next fiscal year?
Yeah, and between, between hearings and public information, it'll take that long anyway.
Right, okay, I just.
I would, I would recommend if you increase rates, increase them in the winter time, when the usage is lower.
Now, Bill, just the information, uh, Mr. Mayor has tasked me on a regular basis with preparing with the annual budget. Uh, we are, we have a surplus in our general fund. And we are not in the hole. We have a surplus in our water reserve fund, we are not in the hole. As I understand it, we're the only political entity in this area that is ahead of the game. Am I right, Bill? No? Who's, who else is ahead?
Nobody's, none of the municipal budgets here are in red, or in red, everybody has a surplus.
I know we were the only one that had a surplus.
What, what happens so much is that, when Sean turns in his budget. I can remember, I hear my mayor once, he told me, Bill, just because it's in the budget, don't mean you can spend it. I'm glad I used to hear that all the time. I said, Homer, if I didn't need to spend it, I wouldn't put it in the budget. But what happens? You don't, sometimes, things happen. And you, and you don't, and you, and you need to, and you say, well, let's, let's hold back that money right now for a little while. And that's how you build up a little surplus, but really, truly, those needed maintenance items should've been completed because the longer you wait to do your maintenance items, so many systems have money of surplus, but they don't take care of the system the way they should.
That's true.
But, and, 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 and that, and it's no, I mean, everybody, I mean, all systems do that, I mean. Because you're scared to spend it, because if you spend it, you're not gonna have any money. And of course, that's what, but, but your budget, see, a municipality is not a, it should be run like a business, but you don't generate a profit. There's no profit mode, there's, there's no wholesale retail thing in a, in a municipality. You sell water, if your budget's a hundred fifteen thousand odd dollars a year, you, you sell enough, you sell your water to pay that hundred fifteen thousand dollars. You know, and that's what I'm saying, it's, the, the worry is not in the, you're not in the business to, to make a profit. You, you generate a little reserve, you hope you have some reserve. So say I put twenty thousand dollars in reserve over, over and above your budget, so you would actually start putting and building that budget up, building that reserve up for emergencies. Because if y'all have a major break, water main break out here on the highway, man, it's gonna cost you thousands of dollars.
Can I make a suggestion that we table this issue for now and have a workshop where Stacy can attend and we can ask y'all the questions about the money?
We're gonna have to do at least one or two workshops.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I re, I recommend.
And then bring it to the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, and of course, I can, I can come back to the workshops, you know, I can, I'll do that for you. And, uh, really and truly, I'd rather present this at a work session instead of a regular council meeting. Because you, 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 I thought, you got, you get free, I mean, you can free to ask questions, but y'all have a good job, mate, y'all are asking a lot of good questions, I appreciate that. But what's gotta be done is that, and I don't know what to answer, I, I don't know what. You know, about, you know, the, the, don't raise your rates coming up now, but you're coming into the spring and people's gonna be using a lot, using their water a lot more. And you need, you need to be thinking about it, and this is just. Don't think about acting on this, you know, now, no, no, it's not, it's not for that at all. But I want Stacy to be part of this too, because his project, he knows his projects, and, and I don't. And, uh, all, all he's done is given me the dollar figure, and I just took twenty years and threw it three percent. And that's worst case scenario from GIFA.
We were trying to get built on the road, and one thing Stacy needed, submitted to the, I guess it was GIFA, was the audit.
Yep.
And I've got him, him pointing down now to where the audit will be in by the last day of this month.
And then he submits this rate study, this. But, like I say, I work with these engineers all the time, but one thing about it. George River Water, there is no charge for me to come up here and do this to y'all.
We appreciate that.
And what happens, believe it or not, the reason Stacy wanted me to do the study, you see, I do all the study for it, turn it into it. But when he turns in the project, these engineers, they get a, their engineering fee is a, is a percentage of, of the construction cost. So it doesn't matter whether he does the rate study or not, he's, he's still gonna get paid for it, really, true. But I, but I don't, but, but that's what, that's why I say, I, I work with his engineers, I work with Stacy, I work with Tim Ingram, Paul Wreckle, and Carter and Sloop, I, I work with all his engineers. But I'm gonna tell y'all, this is something that I, after, normally, this is one of the last things I say. An old city council member told me this one time, when I was presenting my budget to the city of Brunswick. James Stevens, this is hard, he, he was wiser than I think most. He reared back in his chair and he told Bill, he said, Bill, there's really nothing to your budget. Well, at that time, my budget was around ten billion dollars, this was back in before, about nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-nine, something like that. And, um, he reared back, he says, nothing to it. I said, are we looking at the same budget? He said, oh, yeah. Reared back in his chair, he looked at me, he said, when, when your output is bold than your income, then your upkeep will be your downfall.
That's true.
That's right. I said, Commissioner Stevens, I said, do you have a problem with me using that? He said, no. When I do a PowerPoint, I gather from a PowerPoint for James Stevens, because you can't put it any separate than that. If we could send that message on up to Washington a little bit.
It'd be good like that.
You can't spend more than you take in.
Unless you feel.
Unless you feel good. Stay good, but, you know, to, you know, but, you know, but anyway, now, the locality, and one of the times, a lot of times, I figure what I do, I come back in and say, okay, I've looked around City Hall, and I, I've looked for that room that y'all have. And they said, what room is that? I said, don't y'all have a room where you print money? No, where was, I looked over every City Hall I could find, I ain't found one yet. So, but what you gotta do, you, what, what we're doing is, we've got a, an operational budget. And we're setting the rates to meet that budget, nothing more, nothing less. And it just happens to be y'all are.
Are charging.
You're, yeah, meet that budget.
Yep.
If you don't meet your budget, if you don't, if you don't have it, then you can't maintain your system, see? If you don't maintain your system, your upkeep will be your downfall. Anybody got anything, I know y'all, y'all are tired of listening to me up there. And I gotta get back to Brunswick, John.
We gotta drive all the way to Brunswick tonight?
Yeah. It ain't been a hundred fifty miles.
It's too much like work.
See, Jay tried to kick me off the road a bunch, and he, he around a long time, and I said, well, I says, I have to go to these meetings. That's part of my job, is present this to, to the board. And I can't get the jumper guys to do it, they won't, they would, they just won't do it.
We appreciate you, Doc.
And I appreciate y'all. And like I say.
When do you want the workshop?
Uh, weeks.
What do y'all suggest on the workshop?
We need to have it before the April meeting, that's, that's.
You wanna have it in two weeks?
I'm good with that, and, uh, we, I, I'm gonna suggest we put an actual, for one of the better forum, any editorial. We're gonna need to put something in the newspaper. Uh, I, I, I.
Oh, Lord.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think we're gonna need to have something to say to the public, because this gonna be ugly. And it should be, but by the same token, it ain't been a little bit ugly for twelve years. So it's gonna be a whole lot ugly at once.
But if we're not talking about raising the actual rates until winter of next year.
Right.
It might be a little soon, puts up in the paper.
That's to be determined, as part of.
It depends on what Stacy's gonna say, and what's gonna, to, to get that loan.
When is?
I'm gonna set the, uh, workshop meeting, the Thursday, the twenty-seventh.
Right.
Six o'clock.
Cool.
Bill, when is the projected time of either one of those loans?
I don't, I don't have that in mind, I don't know.
I got something for the two trouble. Okay. Sean, you got anything you wanna add to that?
No.
Now, I'm gonna say, no. I have some bills here from Mr. Watkins, uh, loan payment rendered, uh, uh, for reimbursement.
Three of them.
Uh, for the, for projects, work that he done for GIFA on these projects. Uh, you're looking at three of them, each five thousand dollars a piece. So he's done about fifteen thousand dollars. I just counsel him to proceed on that.
The work's been done?
Yeah.
We got paid for this agreement.
Yes, per contract.
Yes, work been done, paid them. The work's been done, paid contract.
I just don't want something in the, by y'all, I want y'all to know, that's why I'm bringing the thought.
Well, that, that's why I, uh, uh, if that was pre-set.
In the year.
I mean, part of it, though, if, when you get the loan and see, whenever you get all the other stuff that's come out of. Like to pay the grant or whatever they got, you can take that money back out of the grant.
I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew, that way nothing comes up out of the money.
Yeah, since the contract is already approved, we don't even need to look.
All right, now. This issue will be tabled to workshop?
I don't have anything on the twenty-seventh, so I've got y'all down for that day. Six o'clock.
Yep.
Quinn? Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, question. Uh, looking at this long-term debt sheet that you handed out for twenty-five to twenty-six, we have, uh, let's see, we, uh, ran thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
This due right now. Do we have the ability to pay that off, and that will no longer be, uh, an issue?
Let me look that up.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting at this point. Retire our, part of our long-term debt.
The, uh, actual power we done paid some on it, I think this year is gonna be paid. If I'm not mistaken, let me check that, but twenty twenty-six, we have eleven thousand dollars.
I'm gonna take that old debt off of the water. I'm gonna take that off of the water, but the, the, the one on wastewater is still active now, is that correct?
Yeah, Fred said.
I'm gonna remove the old debt from water.
All right. A little, a little forward, you got anything to chug?
No. I did.
Go ahead.
So.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So, I haven't had time, I don't think you need to be on the agenda, just to update, we're, we're ending our K nine unit here in the city. Um, just due to the fact of finding a handler that is qualified, that has come to work here, just been literally non-existent. Um, I talked with the mayor about it earlier in the week, I've looked at my budget, what the outcome is for the upkeep of the K nine. And, you know, I keep him in a kennel at home, and I'm working in the afternoons, but he's, he's miserable as well. You know, and, uh, he needs to work, he's a working dog, he's not a play-at-home dog. Um, I've talked to Marcia, uh, PB that's holding the, most of all, our dog training here in Georgia. Um, so, just, she said she would try to find a home to put him in, um, maybe a different agency. So just pointing your guys' feedback on that, if you have any questions about it. So e- every, and I'll go back, every case that I've made with him is not been in sick mode or sick mode. Um, it's very hard to work a dog in a size community that we have. Um, not that it's been a problem, it's just another agency, I mean, it's cool, it's nice to have a dog, it's good PR. But at the same time, that's an, that's adding expense. And, and as much as I've enjoyed it, I have to look at the bottom line with us and my department, um, so.
What's annual budget for K nine?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, that's been worked, being, I run mine under K nine, but I don't have it as a line. Um, I know the upkeep on him, with the medication, different things he has to have, and getting him groomed and upkeep is, he probably costs us about four fifty to five hundred a month. Um, you know, and in a year, that adds up. Um, and, and like I said, you know, the dog was bred and designed to do a specific job. And, and I've tried to keep him up, I've tried, been trying to find somebody for a long time. I have these young guys that come in, they're ready to go, two weeks of working in their board with him, and, and, and things start to taper off. And then he's just sitting in the kennel in the car. And, uh, that was one of my concerns with Marcia, when I talked to him, I said, he's a, he's a great dog. If we decide to move forward, I'd like to see him go to an agency that would have an opportunity to use him in schools, because I've done that, women shelter, those things. And he's done a phenomenal job, he's great with people, but he's moving, and, and, and I've not found anybody. And to be quite honest with you guys, we're just not big enough to have a K nine program. I mean, you know, and I love it, I love dogs, I love working them, but we're just not, you know, our, our agencies are not big enough to have that, so, two options she gave me. We could sell him to another agency, he's got a few years on him, she said, but if I find him the exact right home in the place that he needs to go, would we be willing to donate him to an agency? So that's a question that I wanted to ask y'all. Hold on, he's four and a half, so he's got about three, two and a half, three more good years in him. So, you know, he, he's not gonna be as valuable to an agency financially, I mean, he, he would be very valuable in that time period, but they look at the
Longer.
the overall projected, you know, and Marcia told me, he had about probably two and a half, three more good years in him working.
I'll tell y'all what we paid for him. Now, this was back in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
When we purchased him from the city asset, at four fifteen hundred dollars.
And that was basically given.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's. At that time.
I have no problem, if council, if they found him a good home, and council desired to donate him, I ain't got a problem with it. I'm just trying to tell y'all, works me. I'm just trying to tell y'all, where it's been, you know, in all the story.
He, he's, some of the agencies that could really use him, I think, and I think that's the reason she asked me that, you know, and their budgets are pretty, pretty tight. Because like, those dogs, right off the shelf, are way more expensive than they are. Um, now Rocky's had a lot more training, and I've worked him a lot more, and he's gotten better the older that he's got. But like I said, he don't have the same amount of time left in him as a fresh dog either.
You got any idea, uh, what agency we're talking about?
I told her, I, I, I really trust her judgment and what she does with dogs. She hasn't called me back yet, I told her I wanna talk to you guys. Um, she just threw those options out there, you know, because sometime the, you know, the paying agency may not be the best fit for him to, you know, and he's leaving us, and I mean, I know it, it all comes down to finances, but I really would like for him to be at the right place, you know, uh.
I'd rather him go to the right place than give him away, than him go to the wrong place and not make money.
Yeah.
All day.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Okay, all right.
Get that boy good home.
And that's, that's all of them, he's been, he's been good and good here, and, and I think that we can get him in the right place, uh, to probably do more, he'd be better, he would be better suited in schools and, you know, we had a school here, I keep it busy all the time, you know. But, um, that's all I had on him, next thing I did, wanna bring up, uh, a lot of our body armor expires this year. Um, I've looked at my budget, I think, I think I'll be where, where it wouldn't be something that's gonna have to come from a different area later on in the year. But I'm, I'm gonna, you know, with y'all's blessing, start trying to get some quotes on, on this new body armor.
You don't need our authorization to quote.
I know, I just, I just, I was telling when I started, I want everybody to know, especially on something that's gonna be a decent, decent sized purchase, because that will be.
Are, are we in a, are we in a situation where we're gonna have a rolling expiration, or they all been expired ones?
They, they, they were all in, they're all been like six months of each other, pretty much.
Yeah.
You know, one maybe within a year, but not, not close enough to be, you know, some this year, some that year from now, so. Um, that, that was all I had, man.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm eight, husband Jim put, maybe you got anything you wanna say, cause, uh, rest of us already out. Any names from any other county?
Yeah, I wanna suggest we could have workshops before every meeting. All of them, that way we could cover stuff that, you know, and even if you say, be here five thirty, meeting starts at six.
Yeah.
But we need a workshop, we need to be able to schedule workshops, every meeting, before every meeting.
Sometimes that's gonna be a problem with him running bus.
Well, we'll, we'll move this meeting to be his own. And so if, if he can't get off till six, then we'll have to meet.
The reason I'm here tonight, I got a lady driving, so.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, we, we can change it, change the, at a council meeting, seven o'clock then, and have the workshops starting at six, or whatever.
Well.
Working around their schedule, or whatever.
I mean, we'll, let me think about that. Running through my head, do I make a conjure up?
What, a workshop?
Yeah, let me think about, I can get my schedule on whatever, what I'm saying. Yeah, so, let me think on my one.
All right.
I was nine.
We'll pay bills.
Second.
Okay, I got motion flagging on the flight.
We're gone.